Also, I just want, because we don't know what's going to happen in November. I don't want people to be disappointed if we can't achieve these. Because if the November measures don't pass, the state measures don't pass, we're going to be in a world of hurt. And people will feel like they voted for this measure and then we weren't able to do all the things we said we were going to do. So, I also think that's an argument for keeping it at a fairly close level to what we had initially.
Mr. Herron.
I'll just make a couple of comments. I would argue, obviously, the amount did have an effect. In no way was it a zero effect. And I had people at church telling me to vote against it because of the amount. I've met with Republican Party, I've met with, talked with the news press, I've talked with Lucy Eagle, who's the gentleman who was here last week. And I was saying that if they voted against this, why would they want to be accused of devastating our programs? And it was turned around on me, in my own words, and said, "How can you devastate something you didn't have?" We had $27, and we went for $54. We gambled what we had in hopes of getting more. And we lost that gamble. But we caused it. It wasn't any other entity. We went for more than we had. We were saying, in essence, "We're willing to give up what we had to get more." And we lost. I can tell you, if we go to the same amount, we will have opposition working against us. We were fortunate in this effort. They voted against it, but they didn't campaign against it. I can guarantee you, we will have people campaigning against it, going door to door, as they go door to door with other candidates, and it's going to be a battle on the Assembly. It's going to be, no, it won't be a battle, well, it won't be a battle on Assembly. It'll be a battle on the Senate, and battle on the, a lot of things. The presidency, presidential campaign, the governor and his tax proposals. There'll be a lot of campaigning, more than there was this time around, and the opposition to this will come out in force as a result of those campaigns. I would love to see it under $40. My information is if it's under 40, the opposition would be a lot less. 42, you know, in that range. But the higher you go, I think the more the negative campaigning will be, and people voted for it. Just wondered why we had to double it. You know, it just seemed like a big increase. You know, $54 is not very much, but it was a huge increase. And we can talk about the components, but getting back to, one, Dr. Cash, this is exactly what I wanted. You know, I might have liked to have seen another, maybe another dollar amount of somewhere in there to get a balance, but this is, to me, this is very good. It's a worksheet. There's no, I want to make it clear, there's no guarantee. This is exactly what will be done, and nobody should hold us to these dollar amounts. We didn't hold, you know, the previous administration to the dollar amounts, and the times change. I think that was mentioned at the last meeting. This, and so, number one, it was what I thought we should have. It makes it very clear, because you can pinpoint what we have versus what the hope for it is for the additional $15 and $23, I think it amounts to. So there is, it is easy to see. But getting, I think there's no question, we need to do it again. So if the two issues are, should we do it again, and at what number? Doing it again, I'm in favor 100% of doing it. We can discuss the number, but just to get that on the table, doing it again, I think we need, obviously, need to do it.
Ms. Limon.
I would agree. I think we obviously need to do it, and I think we have the support to move forward. I feel pretty strongly that regardless of the number, we're going to get opposition. Whether we ever think of a half-cent sales tax, or $54, or $30, I think we're going to get opposition. I don't think this November election will be the exception. And at least personally, I know that my thought isn't that I'm doing this because I love taxes. It's because we need to do something about, to bridge the gap between what's happening at the state level and what's happening locally. And we unfortunately have learned the hard way that the solution really is around how do we support our students locally. At least, for the moment, it is. I would have been happy leaving it as is, but I know that that's not going to get unanimous support. So at this point, I would like to throw out numbers. Below 40 scares me. We've already invested $150,000-plus. We're going to invest $60,000 to $90,000-plus, and I want to make sure that we also take into consideration the group that's really, the group that's out in the community, talking to folks, educating members of the community at large about the importance of this. And so, I really respect the work that the Santa Barbara Education Foundation has done, and I think that because we don't have the capacity to be out there doing the same type of work that the Parcel Tax Committee will be doing, I want to make sure that, in some ways, we listen to our experts about what it would take to move forward. So, I think, you know, Mr. Herron, I don't know if you have a number in mind, but I'd love to hear it, because I think we need to start talking numbers.
I agree. Mrs. Cordero.
Since we're asking Mr. Herron a question, I just want to ask you a question. Were you able to, for example, did this news press say, "At a certain amount, we would support this"?
No, the only communication I had with the news press is through, they want more information.
Did the Republican Party say that?
Not the party, no. Individual members, absolutely yes. And their comment was under $40. But, so that, that's $39.99, I don't know. But it's, that was the general comment I got from the many people I talked to. Many is misleading. Five members I talked to.
Okay, thank you.
Ah, numbers. This is where we get down to the nitty-gritty. Well, given our worksheet here, and the amounts that we've been provided, Dr. Cash, if we were to add in to, back to the elementary anything, what would that be? I mean, any items that are not funded under the 42.87?
If we were to add to that total, the areas that we would need to add to that total would be math and science materials. We're looking at, as board members are aware, we have implemented, we have spent categorical money in creating a very, very strong initiative in science instruction in our elementary schools, where we have two science professional developers who are working in a very systematic and systemic way with our K through six teachers, and bringing science forward and being an integral part of our, of a student's day. And the stumbling block for us, because of the fact that the state has not, does not release the instructional materials money to the extent that it used to, like, that's true in just about every category, we find ourselves with some highly trained teachers really searching for and looking for the funds to purchase the materials to implement those, what we call hands-on, minds-on instructional lessons. So that's where that would be added.
Okay. So, I'm sorry. Dr. Cash, you're saying, "Add to the $100,000"?
That's correct.
And, I'm sorry, can I ask you a question? Ms. Tate, do we know how much $1 in the parcel tax equals as a total?
As a total, as far as the parcel tax is concerned?
Yeah.
Only the actual parcels?
Right.
Yes, we have...
Well, $50,000 is $2.58. So I would say $1 would be approximately...
Twenty-three thousand, twenty-four thousand.
It's 24,000 parcels in the elementary and 52 parcels in the high school.
There you go.
Mrs. Parker.
And I think it's important to point that out, because you can see the different parcel tax amounts, especially when you're looking at math and science materials. I mean, the reason that it's less in the secondary district to get the same amount of money is because it's twice as many parcels. I'm, obviously, we would round the numbers and not go to things like $42.87, but I'm okay with the elementary amount. I'm also okay with possibly lowering the secondary district amount and taking out a piece there. I would probably look at the technology, coaches or mentors possibly taking out, we have mentors in the elementary district. I would keep the mentors probably to be parallel in the secondary district, and remove the cost of the parcel tax of maybe, you know, all three of the coaches, or two of the coaches, something along those lines. That's what I'm thinking. So in terms of amounts, I would be okay with, say, $43 in the elementary district, and moving down to possibly $37 in the secondary district.
I'd just like to point out that when you compare this to what we had, it's interesting. In the elementary school, all the extras over and above the six full-time employees in music amounted to $2.80. This proposal increases everything else to $18.07. So going from $2.80 to $18.07 is a huge number. And when you look at the secondary, the theater arts is basically the same, the foreign language is basically the same, career tech is new, so that's $7.73. All the other numbers on here for math and technology in the current HNI is $2.64, and this changes to $19.27. Those are the numbers that I would focus on, those are huge changes. I'd like a little more knowledge on the technology aspect of this. I mean, obviously, I'm in favor of technology. These coaches and mentors are new to our discussion. Can you explain a little bit what those are and why, all of a sudden, we have a huge need for those to be funded by a parcel tax?
Well, it's not an all-of-a-sudden huge need for them. It's a need that we've had in our district for 20 years. And what we have had is we have had, unfortunately, kind of, we have stood still in the area of technology, to be very frank. While the world has, and the world has passed us by, and most homes have passed us by, we have stood still. And so specifically in the area of coaches, these would be individuals who would work with teachers throughout our district, and helping them integrate technology and create in a learning environment that has technology, which reflects the world of work, and most likely also the community in which they live, and for many of our students, the home, which they go home to each and every day. Just buying equipment and giving it to staff is ineffective. Also, attempting to centralize and create some bureaucracy for technology, where all the instruction and all the professional development comes from one source, has also turned out to be very ineffective. And so the best way to do that is to train our teachers at our school sites and create capacity at our schools, so that the teachers, if all six of us were at one junior high school, and Mr. Herron was the technology expert, there is a greater likelihood that I, as a colleague of Mr. Herron's, would go ask him for help. "How do you use that iPad? What new apps have you found?"" And Mr. Herron would come into my classroom, would model lessons, would demonstrate how to use the technology, help me understand how to put it in the hands of students. All of those things that both technology coaches and technology mentors would be doing, is building the capacity throughout our school sites, as opposed to trying to rely upon some, creating some sort of technology bureaucracy, which would not work, and has not worked.
Are coaches and mentors paid the same amount, or is it...
No. The coaches are released to teachers full-time, three for the entire district, which is a very, very small amount when you have over 20 schools. Their job would be to work in-depth, with each of them would work with five teachers. Those teachers would be technology mentors. If they're in the secondary schools or the junior high schools, they would be provided a release period. Each one of them will work with two teachers, or they will partner with those teachers in, either in their content area, or at their grade level, if they're elementary. They will, the tech mentors with those two additional teachers will essentially go in and do what I've described. Model lessons, demonstrate lessons, help teachers find resources for students. All of this is going to be essential to the implementation of the Common Core, which is going to occur a year from now. So for us to have a capacity to facilitate that is going to require a lot of professional development. And this is going to be done by our staff with our staff. So it's a colleague-to-colleague model.
In line with Mrs. Parker mentioning that these might be a line item to change, did I hear you say that the three FTE coaches will cover not just secondary, but also elementary?
I'm sorry?
The three FTE coaches under secondary, they're also going to be coaching elementary teachers?
Yes, yes.
So it's really, it's really elementary and secondary?
Well, the coaches have to work with teachers all throughout our articulated system. So, this was really important, what we didn't want to do. It's very, it's much easier, as you know, in our secondary system, to release teachers for one period of their day to find that. It's very difficult to do that for elementary teachers. So the idea was really that these coaches would find teachers throughout the system. For example, if a coach at Santa Barbara High School would work with teachers at Santa Barbara Junior High School, teachers at Cleveland, teachers at Franklin, kind of the typical, I don't like the word, but I'll use it, feeder pattern, or our component schools within that articulation would receive the same level of coaching, so that students and staff would have the same experiences regardless of what grade level or what school they were at.
But we're still funding it through the secondary district parcel tax?
The coaches are all situated at the high schools, the three comprehensive high schools. That's where they would be housed. That's where the staffing would be allocated, is one at San Marcos, one at Dos Pueblos, and one at Santa Barbara High School. That's why it's put in the secondary. And the cost of the mentors in the elementary is the stipend that we would pay to the mentor teachers, since, as I shared with you, it's very difficult to release them for periods of time.
Mrs. Parker.
And I want to sort of clarify that computers and technology were part of WNX. This, I know you've been developing this plan over the course of the year, but that certainly would have been funded through WNX, or could have been funded through WNX. And this is, what I appreciate now, is that it's being spelled out in much more detail. The plan's really gotten fleshed out, and the connection to the parcel tax is much clearer. But I also want to point out that one of the issues, in terms of trying to keep things the same as they were four years ago, is that we've cut 20 million since then, and we're cutting 6 million this coming year. And if you keep things the same, the quality of what's going on in the classrooms and what's available to the students continues to deteriorate dramatically. And this only brings back a very small portion of what's been taken away. And in this particular case, if we're talking about spending more on technology than we have in the past, it is an accelerating need in the district. And so that's my concern. If you went back to the original numbers, then people are going to say, "What are you doing?"" Because what they'll see is a decline in quality. They're seeing that anyway, this doesn't remotely make up for the millions and millions that we've lost. But it helps, and I think it's important.
Plus, if we were to do a true technology initiative, it would be millions of dollars that we actually need in our district. I mean, if we were to go to a one-to-one program, or even a bring-your-own-device program district-wide, it's not the hundreds of thousands that we're talking about here, it's millions of dollars, that's what, which many districts across the nation have already moved to, that we would need to do in order to get to that spot.
Well, I absolutely appreciate the mentor and coach piece, because I know from personal experience, you can't teach without assistance in technology if you're not a technology person. I mean, we, our teachers really need that support to benefit. You can't just throw equipment at a program and hope it's going to succeed. And so, we have to put people in those places. Mrs. Cordero, you had a comment?
Well, I just wanted to echo what Ms. Parker was saying, but to me, that argues for why the amount should be higher. I'm personally not inclined to support anything that would go below, I think, even $43 in either district. I was thinking more 43 for elementary, maybe 40, even 45 for the secondary, because I think that technology piece is really key, and we absorb most of that cost in the secondary district. I think, when we talk about that we had 27, and then we more than doubled it, maybe, I'm willing to say we don't have to double it, but the reality, the educational, the reality of educational, of education has changed so dramatically since then, in terms of the amount that we've cut, what we need to provide, and the cost of providing it. All three of those things mean that if we whittle this down to anything below $40, I think we're misleading the public. And I think we're also trivializing the need for it. You know, the public needs to be aware, and I think we can make them aware, and I think our last election showed that they support it, that the situation for education is dire. If we want to present our students with anything remotely approaching a comprehensive education in 2012 and beyond, we have to be willing to make up for some of what the state is just, you know, basically destroying. And as a community, it seems to me that we have understood that. So, I personally don't want to, I would not support it going below 40 in either district, and I'd rather see it stay like 43 and beyond. Because I think that's, I think we have the numbers to show that that's the baseline, and I don't think it would take, I don't think it takes much for people to understand that the baseline today is not going to be the baseline tomorrow. So...
I'm going to throw out a couple of numbers here. I actually really respond to the notion of additional math and science funding in elementary, and, because I think that's so important and so key for moving forward. So I will propose 45 for elementary. On the other hand, the secondary district won by four percentage points in 2008, HNI, and we're down like two, where we were in June. So I would be more inclined to stay where we are in the secondary. We've had the case made to us by multiple people that lowering secondary probably is more important than elementary. And so, if we came in at 45 at elementary and 43 at secondary, that would bring us to a total of 88. And I know that 100 was a threshold, I think people felt very strongly that it was difficult for us to cross. On the other hand, we're reducing it by almost 20%. And I personally do think that it's important for us to make the case that we heard you, you know? We want the Big Ten, we want everyone to support education, and so, we're respecting the opinion of those people who weren't on board in June. So I'll just throw those two out as a starting point, and that you respond to that.
Just a technical point of order, this is the conference agenda. Are we actually going to come up with numbers at this meeting and approve them? Are we going to take action today on either of these two proposals?
No. My hope would be that you would instruct me very specifically, so I could prepare appropriate resolutions for the next board meeting.
So in essence, you're asking us to set a number?
Yes, so that...
So the answer to my question is, yes, you expect some action, even though this is a conference item?
Well, I don't expect that you're going to vote on it.
We can provide direction. Ms. Limon.
I would agree with what's been said. I mean, the cost of education is so much. To be honest with you, even at 45 and 43, it still makes me uncomfortable, because the majority of our community supported the 54. I think we're getting really caught up on only thinking about the 120 people that didn't move forward, and not the thousands-plus that moved forward. But I understand, and I hear what everyone's saying, and anything under 40, you're likely not going to get my support. And that being because I think we need to do what will have some type of advantage to the student, and 27, $30 isn't going to cut it. It's not getting you the same thing that it would have years ago, or even last year, for that matter. So, I could support the 43 and 45, but I understand that regardless of the amount, we will continue to get opposition. And so, I think that we would want to work with our Parcel Tax Committee and the Santa Barbara Education Foundation on what we can do to better inform and educate our constituents. And I do want to hear, I think that it's important to recognize that this isn't just a partisan issue. I mean, there's members in the community that any amount is going to hurt, and it's going to hurt their monthly paycheck, their bills, that are just really making it now. But I also, you know, I had the opportunity to do two Spanish-language radio pieces, and a lot of the feedback I got was from folks in the community who are barely making it. "We get it. We get it. We get that we need to do our part, and it hurts, but it's worth it." Because we know that our students are getting just that extra piece that they can't get elsewhere. That if they tried to buy an art class on their own, they couldn't afford it, if they did it in the community. That as much as they would love to support their children with technology, they don't have coaches or mentors or teachers at home when they get home from school, when their kids get home from school. So, I think at the end of the day, the taxes feel uncomfortable for really a wide range of folks, and it's not just a partisan issue. But I respect that it feels uncomfortable, but I also think that people, their heart and minds in the right place. And again, the overwhelming majority did support this. It was, we were just 120 short for one, and yeah, 700 for the other. But thousands supported what we were doing, and even though, yes, they commented, no one likes taxes. I mean, we don't want to do this more, but we, the comments that we got about the amount were really more about, "Well, I'm going to feel it a little bit more." But they're willing to do what's right for the students.
Mrs. Parker.
And I guess my direction would be that I could also support 43 and 45. And I'm happy to start talking about language shortly. And I agree with Ms. Limon. Mrs. Deacon and I spoke with Democratic Central Committee Leadership, and it was clear that it was likely that they would support us even with a lower amount, but their point, again, was that it probably was not necessary to go to a lower amount, and that a significant number of Republicans must have voted for this, both of the measures. And so it is not a partisan issue. It is about the community supporting children locally. So, I appreciate that point.
Mr. Herron.
One other comment just came to mind, and maybe it's more on the language, but it does affect the dollars. It's my understanding that some groups, when you looked at the information we passed out, and saw school by school by school, how it was allocated, that the language that, the fact that we shared everything proportional to the students, and the language actually spells out that it has to be that way for charter schools, that a school like Peabody got so many more dollars. And there's a thought that, you know, some of the other schools probably should have gotten more than they got, and others should have gotten less. I know that the, how we divide it is up to the administration and the board, with the exception, if this wording here stays, that we're obligated to give the charter schools X dollars. But that was a point that some of the entities thought, just by own information, that was unfair, that there are certain schools that should get more of the parcel taxes, not that should get more of the parcel taxes, not less. I'll just point that out.
Dr. Cash, do you want to clarify that, because I'm not exactly sure.
Well, yeah, everybody, all the elementary schools got the same amount per, it was a per pupil allocation. It's just that our district schools chose to spend that all on elementary school music, and the charters opted out of that. And so, that's why the amount to their school looked higher than it might to other schools, because if we included in the per school, how much every school got, the cost of the elementary school music program, it wouldn't have looked at a proportion relationship to the actual size of Peabody versus the size of the other schools. So, that's why it looked that way, is because they didn't get a music program like everyone else did.
I think that's really important, because I think there's a misperception out there, where we actually funded our non-charter music teachers. They chose, the charters chose not to use their money that way. Mrs. Parker, did you want to...
I just think that's a question of making the, you know, including different numbers in the graph, so that it looks like what it really is, that it was balanced across student populations. Because I mean, I think if we had charter representatives here, they would be, you know, you know, the very idea that they were getting more than anybody else, when they were really getting the same amount as everybody else, they would be very disappointed in that, if that's the community perception.
Right. And I think when you ask the population at large to vote for something like this, it has to be per pupil. I can't imagine asking people in one neighborhood to pay more for students in another neighborhood. I mean, they're supporting their own kids when they vote that way. So, I hope that clarifies it for you.
It does. It's our own information led to those conclusions, so we need to be careful what we put out in terms of something like that, or even the fact that this is going to raise sixteen million dollars, or four million, or that we had a hundred million in bonds. All those numbers confuse the public. And so, I'd be real careful how we spell it out. But the bottom line is, even the per pupil, you know, I had the same argument with the bond money. I wanted to spend the bond money where it actually needed to be spent, not per school, or not, you know. And I sort of feel the same way on this, is where is the need, and how can we fill that need? And it may be bigger at one school than the other. So, it's just, it's a philosophical thing.
Right. And I just go back to, you're asking people to vote. I think they deserve those resources to come to their students as well. I want to make one more comment, and then go to the language. Mr. Robinson had brought up the notion of district resources and being provided in the campaign on an informational level. And while we had flyers that we provided to the school sites, we didn't do any mailings, as most of the other districts do, that do successful parcel tax measures. And so, I would like us to build into a budget, and I'm going to say it now, because we didn't do it earlier in the initial phases of putting together the tax, that I very much feel the need that we need to do that. It's not inexpensive to get the word out, and if we rely solely on donations, we will be struggling.
I would agree, having participated in successful bond campaigns and informational, information from the district, as long as it doesn't prompt questions like what Mr. Heron just mentioned, is going to be extraordinarily important, and the best way to get it is through a direct mail campaign. I'd also add that this campaign was, I am attempting to do my best to respect the culture of the district, was the least amount of participation by district officials and by school site officials that I've seen. And my understanding is, this is kind of what's been happening. But to be very frank, I think we're going to need a more robust effort, obviously not during paid time, but by, and our principals are raring to go. They felt like they had their hands tied, and they want to be active participants in any campaign that supports students in their schools. And so, there'll be a different amount, a level of support if these measures go forward in November, and a different amount of participation by our school site staff.
I think we're going to need as many people on the ground as possible. That is one of the things we learned in hindsight. Mr. Hett Young, could you put up the language, the proposed language? Mrs. Cordero?
I just, I feel like we're touching on a lot of issues all at once, and I want to make, I want to kind of keep them a little bit separate, because I think we have one issue, which is, should we go forward in November, which I think I hear a consensus about. We have one issue of what the amount should be, which we've had a suggestion that at least a few people have responded to positively. Then we have the issue of what should our level of participation be, which I think might be another discussion. And only, my only concern, because I absolutely think we should have a higher level of participation, but given some of the issues we've had with, for example, the pay-to-play language, et cetera, I want to be really cautious about how we pursue that, to make sure that everybody who participates is participating within the appropriate rules and guidelines. And then, the language. So, I kind of want to, I'm hoping we don't push all those together, but rather look at them a little bit separately.
I agree. And I think today, what we are doing is providing Dr. Cash with our direction on an amount and the language, which are things that have to go forward right away. I mean, our participation, and we'll certainly, we'll probably turn to Mr. Price for, you know, language to provide to staff, and, you know, all those other things will follow in course.
And I also did want to point out that even though this is on the conference agenda, our conference agenda specifically states that we may take action on these items. So, if we are in agreement, we could take action on these lists today.
Right. The staff may need, if we change the language, may need time to bring it back to us Tuesday, but we'll see where we end up with that. Because we did this with Q and R, and I went back on my computer and found that language, I realized that we had reworded things slightly, so that it was, to my mind, more readable. In other words, Santa Barbara Unified School District is at the beginning of the sentence, rather than at the end of the sentence. And so, I made some changes just in phrasing here, and also, I made a few proposals regarding the words we use. Support is a fine word, but protect, I think in some ways, does a better job of conveying to people that we're saving things that will be lost otherwise. And so, I tried to substitute protect in a few places where I thought that was appropriate. So, I know you're all seeing this for the first time. If you want to take a minute and look it over, provide feedback on it.
So, this is the document that you created?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, this is your document?
This is my document. It's on the dais, and it's also up there. And I took the two draft resolutions that we got, and just reworded them, because I, it was really fresh in my mind when I went back and looked over Q and R, what we had done. Mrs. Cordero?
Well, if it's okay with everybody else, I did have a quick comment on this. I mean, a revision that I wanted to suggest. Has everybody read it?
And Mr. Hett Young, are you able to make changes on the screen for us?
And I just want to double check. The limit is seventy-five words, is that correct?
That's my understanding. And I was also, we were told that the name of the district counted as one word.
Okay. So, towards the end where it says, "with no administrative salaries," I think that's confusing. It sounds like the administration is not going to get a salary.
I agree. And that actually, I didn't change.
And so, I wanted to change that to, "with no money going to administrative salaries." So, that would be adding three words, money going to. We have one word. We're under the limit by one word, so we really have to just eliminate two additional, two additional words to make, to make up for that. And I thought we could do that by eliminating two of the widths, where we said, "with an available exemption for senior citizens, independent citizen oversight, no money going to administrative salaries, and with every dollar staying in our local." So, we just took out two of those widths. We can make up for the addition of the words. And I would just recommend the same thing in the secondary.
That's fine. And actually, I misspoke. It said, "without administrative salaries" in the resolution language.
And, Mr. Hett Young, you'd need to get rid of the width in front of the "no money." No money going to administrative salaries. There you go.
Could we get some input from our foundation about the language, support versus protect versus enhance?
I would love to hear that.
Would that be okay?
Sure. Is there someone who'd like to come up to the mic and address that?
And also, if you would be willing to comment on our amount that we're talking about?
Please, thank you. Just for a little background, I've done over a billion dollars in tax measures, a lot of it going to Santa Barbara County. And so, I have some context for this stuff. Just to answer your question first, the amounts, if you looked at the return on the ballots, and actually, the folks that were voting for two measures, supported the measures more than the folks that were voting for one. So, you know, I don't think that there's, we're seeing a hit because people were asked to vote for two, and that those amounts were the same or different. They responded with more support than that. As for the, excuse me, the ballot language, typically, we use really strong language, and it's not ambiguous to voters. So, things like protect, we want to instill confidence in where these revenues are going, and the benefits that they will receive by making these investments. So, I'm not here to wordsmith on the fly. I would just consider that the language is strong, that if you're reading it as the mind of a voter, that you're saying, okay, I know that this money's going to make this investment in these things. Typically, most revenue measures fail because they're kind of ambiguous, and that voters don't have the confidence that the money's going to be spent the way that, where it needs to go. And it's also reflected in not necessarily the amount, but that the amount is sufficient enough to supply that need. So, I've heard that, you folks talking about that. So, if two hundred dollars gives me a level of assurance that I'm going to receive these benefits, and a hundred dollars is not, I'm not likely to vote for the hundred dollars, because I don't think it's a good investment. So, there's a lot of things in voters' minds that have to do with the dollars, that really isn't about a threshold of, this is too much, but is it enough to provide the need? So, I would just urge you to take a lot of thought and time on this, and get a lot of very good feedback from your council on what you can and cannot say within the seventy-four words, and to be very deliberate about the readability factor. As President Deacon pointed out, it's really important to guide the reader through it, so they see where it's going. I think that's a great thing. What it's going to be spent on, how much it is, and those types of things. So, thank you.
Mrs. Deacon, may I follow up with a question?
Sure.
Okay. I apologize, but I'm not, I don't know how to interpret what you just said to us. I don't know whether you're suggesting that the language is not strong enough, or that support would be stronger than protect?
I don't really like both of them personally. And I don't, I don't want to sit here and tell you, it's hard to design these things by committee, and, you know, we typically spend a lot of time. This is the most important thing you can do. Every voter's going to read this. So, yeah, I would just encourage you to...
Are there words that you think are stronger than those words?
Well, again, I don't want to be, I like to look at what, I would go back to what the polling showed. People were found important. I would look at the language that that, that the poll used. I, you know, and I would look at what the threshold is for what you can say legally, because protecting and supporting is much different than funding, and that's really what we're asking voters to do.
Okay, so, funding might be a strong...
Right, but I'm not sure you can use funding, because it's in supplementing, and supplanting, and all the other things that the legal folks, you know, have to tell us if that's the appropriate language we could use.
Okay, but that was what I was looking for, some, like, because I think it's...
Funding would be ideal.
The verbs that we're really looking at. So, funding is a stronger verb than protecting or supporting?
Right.
Is, are there other verbs that you think are stronger, you know, like maintaining, or enhancing, or...
Well, again, and that's, again, that, I'm not sure, because this is, because of the nature of this funding, I'm not sure exactly what you can say in the ballot language.
Right.
Because you have to be, there's a line you can cross, that you're not actually doing that. So, funding may not be appropriate. Maintaining may be, or may not be appropriate. I like that word as well, but...
Right. And that's really just what I wanted to know, is, we understand that some of the words may not work, but what are the ones that would be considered the strongest if we could use them? So, funding, maintaining?
Funding, investing, maintaining.
Okay. Okay. So, that just gives me an idea of what kinds of words make it stronger.
Right. And everybody reads these things differently, so I'm just...
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Limon?
So, I actually wanted to go back, speaking of strong language. And I had thought that prior to Ms. Cordero making her changes, that we would keep it with, with an available exemption for senior citizens, requiring an independent citizen oversight, without administrative salaries, and with every dollar staying in our local elementary schools. Because for me, the one piece that always gets overlooked is that there is an independent citizen oversight committee. So, a lot of the misinformation comes from, this money's not being used appropriately. And I also know that sometimes, we really work hard to find folks in the community who want to serve on these committees. So, I wanted to beef that part of it up, but this was before the addition of no money going to administrative salaries. So, yeah, if we add requiring an independent, independent citizen oversight, oh, but the word committee's not on there, requiring independent citizen oversight, it just replaces one word. I don't know how other folks feel.
You know, I'm going to make a suggestion just to throw out there. Rather than us sit here and tinker with individual words right now, we do have until Tuesday, and it might be good to send this back to staff, to explore the legality of certain words that we've been using. Personally, I think protect is a strong word, because I think if people think something is going away, it gets their attention. But maybe it would be better, especially because then the word count starts getting iffy when we start adding and subtracting. I think it'd be good for us to give input, but have it go back to staff, and have you take a look at it for Tuesday.
Yes. I mean, I was just noticing that with that change to requiring there, that you have to put the width back in for no money, and you really need to put the width back in for every dollar. That actually shouldn't have come out in the first place. So, then we're going to word count issues. But I agree, it's strong. So, I'm happy with just giving some general input on the language. I mean, basically, what's changing, I appreciate what you've done in terms of the main structure, and now, we're fussing down at the level of individual verbs. And that is important, but I agree that we can have staff work on that, and then, and then fine tune it on Tuesday. And, you know, what we needed to have happen was some restructuring, and then to take the class size piece out. So, if that has happened, then I think we can really fine tune it, and make a final decision on Tuesday, hopefully without too much time.
Scotts Valley recently passed, just passed, a very, a successful one that had bipartisan support. They use the word maintain throughout theirs. So, you know, there are lots of other samples to look at. I think funding will be problematic, because these are, in a sense, additional monies that are coming in, and so, we're not going to defund math education if these don't pass. But, Mr. Heron, do, I'm not sure I heard you weigh in on the amounts.
I'm not going to at the moment. I'll take it on advisement and make a decision on Tuesday.
Okay. So, Dr. Cash, I think it sounds like we're going to come back on Tuesday, but we've given you direction about reworking some of the language. And why don't you put in the forty-five and forty-three amounts, and then we can take a second look at those on Tuesday? Does that sound amenable to the board? Yes, Ms. Limon, Mrs. Cordero?
I'm sorry. I just, obviously, I'm in agreement with... I'm sorry, I just, obviously, I'm in agreement with the direction that you just gave to Dr. Cash. But I would like us, in the meantime, to consider the possibility, Mr. Robinson said that those who were voting for both of the measures actually supported them even more than those who were voting for only one. So the total and the notion that they were equal amounts can seem to be a factor in that vote. So just in, over the week or whatever, we might consider the possibility of increasing the amounts.
We did just bump it up to 45.
I know, I know. But it's still a reduction from the original ballot measure.
All right. Well, I think we've completed our business today, so I will...
Any other comments from anybody in the audience that we, after our discussion, anybody want to say anything, or?
I'd love to, but your public comments are...
I asked that that be waived in case anybody after hearing us had any comment to the president, but that's what I asked for.
Okay, we've got one more public comment.
Yes, thank you. Douglas Trup.
Good morning. My name is Douglas Trup. I happen to be a music teacher with the elementary schools in Santa Barbara School District. I wear several hats, because I'm also a parent of five children, three of whom are still K through 12 school age and attend Santa Barbara Public Schools. My wife also teaches at Roosevelt as a kindergarten teacher. My mother-in-law is a property owner. Three, or two residential properties and some business properties as well, all within the boundaries. So I wanted to speak on a couple of just items. Number one, there were some comments made about whether it's a partisan issue or not. I roll conservative. My brother-in-law, if I can be glib for a moment, makes my Russian ball look palatable sometimes. However, she loves her grandchildren, and the woman will vote for these parcel taxes because of that. Okay? We also voted for it for obvious reasons. And I think the initial reaction to seeing the new parcel tax on our behalf was more to the point of some of the comments Mr. Heron was making, because it was double the amount before. I'm going, wow. It's just like if you saw gasoline go up to $8 at the pump, you'd say, wow, you know, why so much? And so I don't know that there's a general understanding of why that amount much more is needed. However, with lowering it a little bit to in the 43 to 45, then it suddenly becomes more palpable. It may not be totally reasonable, but it's a psychological thing that you may need to I would like to put one question, and, you know, I don't know if you're obligated to answer or not, but I did notice the FTE change in the elementary district, and I am aware of where placements have been made. And there's, we were working with 7.5 FTEs for the nine elementary schools that we cover, and we're only working with 6.0 FTEs now. And I don't know if we're planning to cover that with some of the secondary time, or conversely, if we are changing the nature of what we are providing to the children. We've been asked to cover K through six, every child, this last four years, which we'd love to continue to do. But we're, those of us who have been rehired are starting to make plans for next year, and we kind of would need to know, are we covering the same thing? That kind of thing. Anyway, I really...
Thirty seconds.
Truly appreciate the board's effort to put this back on the ballot. I do think it will pass with the slightly lower amount, and hooray. When we first moved here about 10 years or so ago, I was really taken aback at the lack of elective programs, especially in the performing arts area. And what this has done for performing arts in this district is just tremendous. So thank you very much for the opportunity to speak, and for helping our family to be part of the profession we love.
Thank you.
Thank you. And just to clarify, these cuts don't go in effect if they happen until 2013, so this coming year, everything stays the same. But, Dr. Cash, you wanted to clarify...
Yeah, there is no change in the FTE allocation. It was always 6.0 for the parcel tax. The remainder of it has always been funded out of the general fund.
Okay, thanks.
That was my question, too. The big thing on HNI was that we were not going to supplant anything, it was all supplement.
Correct.
Is that, and that was starting with a 2008 base. Does this revised thing still start with a 2008 base? Is there any intent to supplant anything that we've been doing with these funds?
No.
This is on, okay.
Yeah, it's the same, it's the same amount. The change in cost represents the increase in benefits.
So the things that weren't in HNI, they're not going to be used to free up money to spend someplace else?
No.
So the extra money on here are supplanting what we're doing, not, supplementing what we're doing, not supplanting what we're doing. Thank you. That was a very good question.
Okay, we are now adjourned. Thank you.